Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 11 Reinbeck Town Board Meeting. Would you all please stand for the pledge? Okay. May I please have a motion? We'd like to approve some prior minutes. May I have a motion to approve prior minutes of July 14th and July 20 -- July 14th regular board meeting and the 28th special board meeting?
Motion.
And a second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Any announcements? Does anybody have any announcements?
Nope.
I prepared a schedule of the tentative budget schedule on tab 15, if you'd all go through it. I'd just like to take you through it. The budget worksheets were to go out Friday today. They're due back at the end of the month on the 29th to me. I will review them all from the 1st to the 25th of September and draft a tentative budget. The budget will be delivered to the clerk on the 26th of September, which will give the clerk ample time to -- I'd like to -- a special meeting at our -- on August 1st to lay it in front of you, and then we will schedule our workshops then or even at our September meetings.
Yeah, you meant October 1st. You said August.
Thank you. To workshop it. Of course, between the 1st and the 26th, while I'm drafting the tentative budget, anybody who'd like to work on it or be involved is welcome too. All information will be open, but I'll be spearheading it with Shelley. Our final preliminary budget should be released to the -- we should notice the public sometime between the 3rd and 7th of November. Our public hearing will be on the 10th, and we should adopt the budget between the 17th and the 20th of November. So again, I'll keep you all informed. Anyone's welcome to participate, and hopefully we'll have smooth sailing.
Is this a month ahead of the state one, or is this to the --
Pretty close.
Because the only reason I ask is I know some departments are going to have trouble with getting the worksheets in in time.
Yeah, I've given a lot of lag, a lag time. So there's -- if some -- I'm hoping to get started with the departments that get them in earlier, and I realize that we have until September to get them. Any departments like Recreation that had a lot of buzz this summer and is going to need time to pull records together can obviously have longer.
Okay.
Is that your concern?
Yeah, because we'd been working to, I thought, the 20th of September.
That's fine. So I'd hope to get a jump on some of the other areas, and that can come. Any further announcements? I'm going to take the meeting out of order tonight. I'm going to skip to resolution number 10, which is 2014-284, Introducing Local Law to Be Numbered of 2004, A Local Law Amending the Town of Reinbeck Zoning District Maps Established Pursuant to the Town Code, Chapter 125, Article 2, Section 125-16, and Amending the Boundaries of the Mining Overlay District. We have John Lyons here to introduce this for us, and thank you, John.
Okay, hello. John Lyons, Land Use Counsel, to the Reinbeck Town Board. You have a packet that's been provided to you by John. You may recall that some months ago, it came to the attention of the town board that the boundaries of the mining overlay district on the town zoning map did not conform to the directives about mining in the town comprehensive plan that was passed in 2009. And Chapter 3, Task Number 58 of the comp plan, said that "The town should examine and improve regulations in the zoning law concerning mining activities and amend the zoning law to further restrict mining activities to existing active mine sites and to prohibit the placement of new mines within the town." And as presently written, the boundaries of the mining overlay district are more expansive than the active existing mining sites. So what has been developed is an amendment to the town zoning law that is being introduced to you this evening. It makes a simple change to the zoning district map. It's changing the boundary of the mining overlay district to limit mining activities in Reinbeck to existing active mining sites. And we're defining those existing active mining sites as those sites that have valid permits from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, and the district boundaries would conform with the life of mine boundaries that have been established by the DEC. The resolution that's in front of you this evening is very simple. This is the introduction of the proposed law to you for consideration. It's the beginning of the adoption process. It's also the beginning of the SEAKER environmental review. In this resolution, you will be declaring yourselves to be lead agency for the environmental review of this proposed action under SEAKER. You'll be classifying this as a Type 1 action. You will also be acknowledging receipt of an environmental assessment form, which has been prepared by the town's planning consultant, Art Broad. John has copies of that. The EAF is not entirely complete at the moment, so this resolution is acknowledging receipt of the document but not accepting it as complete. There's some natural resource mapping that will be provided as a supplement to that by the Conservation Advisory Board, and I think Art's already been discussing that with Ryan, and so they're working on that. You'll be doing -- taking two actions this evening as required by the zoning law. You'll be referring this to the planning board for a report and recommendation. You'll also be referring it to the Conservation Advisory Board for a report and recommendation, both of which are required by the zoning law. And that's enough for tonight. You'll just get the process started. Looking ahead, after the reports come in from the planning board and the Conservation Advisory Board, we'll -- you'll be taking further action. Obviously, you'll be completing the environmental review. We'll be referring the draft law to the Dutch County Planning Department pursuant to general municipal law 239M. You'll be holding a public hearing so that you can get public comment on this. So those steps will be coming in the future as we continue to develop more information on this.
Thank you, John. I just have a question. I know we have the chair of the Conservation Advisory Board here and the chair of the planning board. We're going to be referring this to you tonight for your review and input. Do you think that you'll need a month to get this back to us, or is there a timeline that you have?
I don't see it would be more than 30 days for the --
30 days from the planning board, Ryan, and your feeling?
Well, you'll be handling that, right, Melody?
I'm sorry.
But Michael, you're disqualifying yourself.
Michael's recused himself.
Right, so Melanie --
Melanie Moore, the deputy chair, will be at the helm for this item.
So tonight, we're accepting this. We're declaring ourselves lead. We're going to refer it to the planning board and the CAB for review and comments, and this begins the process. We're declaring it as a Type 1, and we'll start, begin, seek, or -- and I'm assuming that after we get comments back from the planning board and the Conservation Advisory Board, we'll have a public comment and proceed.
Yep, we'll be taking further action. I can't tell you right now exactly what the timing of the public hearing will be, but that's definitely something that will be in the future.
Time in September.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions from the board? Does the public have any questions for us? Thank you, John. Okay, great. If there's not any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, so I expect we'll keep you posted. The planning board and Conservation Advisory Board will start working on this, and this is, in effect, beginning the process for this local law to change the boundaries of the zoning overlay district. It's a zoning amendment or correction.
Just go back for a second.
Go back for a second.
You said motion, and we did not have a motion? So can we just --
Can we redo this? I'd like to make a -- ask for a motion to introduce local law to be decided of 2014, amending the Town of Reinbeck zoning district maps established pursuant to the Town Code, Chapter 125, Article 2, Section 125 through 16, and amending the boundaries of the mining overlay zoning district. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I got a question.
We've got to bring the motion to the floor first. All in favor of bringing the motion to the floor? Okay, any discussion?
The only discussion is, the motion isn't in the form in our book. It has all -- this is the motion in our book. We're adopting the whole thing, not just one paragraph of it.
Right.
Okay.
John gave us the pertinent points of what we're doing tonight. We can certainly read it out loud if anyone would like to.
No, I don't, but it has a lot of resolves in it, not just the one you read.
I read the title of the resolution.
Oh, okay. So we're passing the whole thing. That's fine.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
We're going to go back to our agenda, and we have Dan Miller from the DEC's Hudson River Estuary Program Habitat here to give a presentation on potential research in Reincliffe. Hi, Dan. Thank you, John.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. I understand you've got a very long agenda here, so I'm only going to take about 10 minutes to tell you about some of the work that we're doing at the estuary program and how we may have an opportunity to partner with the Town of Reinbeck in doing some habitat improvements down in Reincliffe. In lieu of a presentation, I did hand each of you -- you should all have about a nine-page handout that's going to go along with what I'm going to say now for you to sort of review to review and refer to later as you think about this project. Again, my name is Dan Miller. I'm the Habitat Restoration Coordinator for the Hudson River Estuary Program. The program itself works --
Are you a state employee, or is this a private?
I work for New York State DEC's Hudson River Estuary Program.
Oh, okay.
The program itself works with communities through grant programs, through technical support, through other types of development projects regarding the Hudson itself on five major themes. One is preserving the scenery, working to clean water, both for the organisms that live in the estuary and for the people who live around the estuary, preserving access for communities such as Reinbeck and Reincliffe, looking at habitat and making sure that habitat in the estuary is taken care of and preserved, and all this in the light of climate change, what's going to happen to these concerns as sea level rises. My emphasis within the program is on habitat itself. The places where fish, birds, turtles, any other critters that live within the estuary, where do they live, and how do they utilize the different places within the river? At the same time, I'm thinking about how people interact with the river and how they affect each other. One of the projects that we're involved in is the Sustainable Shorelines Project, and there's, I think, on page three or the second page after the title page, is a brochure. This is a cooperative project with the Cary Institute of Ecosystem Studies, the Stevens Institute of Technology, and a variety of other partners, where we've looked at the shoreline as habitat for fish and birds in the river and how we use the shoreline and how that impacts the river itself. To complicate matters, we also think about how that's going to change as sea level rises and how now we deal with more and more intense storms now and into the future. So when we go in and try to stabilize our shorelines or try to engineer them for our purposes, how does that impact habitats in the river? We're trying to propose different shoreline treatments that serve both the communities and the estuary itself. One of the things that we've recognized in through our research is that vertical sheet pile bulkhead, much like what you have off of Reincliffe, is about the worst possible habitat you can have for fish. That's not to say that it doesn't have its place in the community, because sheet pile bulkhead provides many, many services to people. I was down there on Reincliffe on Saturday evening and saw the clear water come up, and that's, you know, bulkhead is where boats come and tie up, because it allows for deep water and a flat surface, and allows for easy access on and off the boats. People like to fish there, so there's many human uses associated with that. So given that this is going to, you know, be something that's going to exist in the estuary, we've taken on an idea of trying to enhance the habitat of these while preserving those uses. And we are working with some local metal fabricators to create what we're calling habitat enhancement boxes that we hope to attach to these bulkheads throughout the estuary. We are designing these to provide structural complexity, refuge for fish, so that when they're exposed to the rapid currents of the Hudson, they have a place to sort of take refuge and sort of out of the current and wait for something to swim by, maybe somebody's lure who's, you know, fishing off of the edge of the bulkhead, and try to not create a system that is equivalent to a natural shoreline, but at least better than what it is right now. Because like I said, it's pretty much a biological desert, these shoreline types. At this time, we have some preliminary designs that are in the pamphlets that you have. They're very preliminary. They may or may not be what we ultimately come up with, but we do have some very specific design criteria, which are we are not going to interfere with the use of the bulkhead. So whatever design we come up with has to still allow boats to tie up, not present a hazard to those boats, so there shouldn't be anything sticking out that could damage a hull. They would not jeopardize or compromise the integrity of the bulkhead from an engineering or stability standpoint. These are all design criteria that we're going to work with. We are working with a local metal fabricator and installer and hope to have a demonstration site installed early spring 2015. And what we're doing now is we're looking for a willing community to work with us to allow us to invest in the design process and have some sort of agreement, whereas if we come up with something that is reasonable, meets the criteria that we all agree on, would allow us to utilize that site as a demonstration site. So that's my brief introduction into the project for you to consider, and I guess my question to you is if the board sees fit. I would like to talk about a little direction on who to interact with. We've already been working with the Waterfront Committee, and Patricia Wind arranged for me to be here tonight, and they're well briefed on the project. So that's it, and I'll take any questions about the project itself if you had any.
Has this been done before somewhere else?
There are a number of different attempts in Ohio on the rivers out there. There's been a few out in Washington, and there's been a few down in New York City. They have had varied success, and none of them have really had the same conditions that we have in the Hudson. The ones in Ohio lack the tidal component, and none of them have the tides driven by ice like we have here in the Hudson. So one of the things we're going to have to do is devise a system that we can pull out in late fall and reinstall in early spring so that it would not be damaged by the ice. So there's some, you know, some real engineering challenges with this that we're going to try to -- we're going to help through.
Yeah, the real question for me is how do you know when it works?
Well, this would be run as an experiment, so we would only put four of these units in, and so that accounts for four of the internal recesses. So there will be a treated area and an untreated area, and we're going to be working with Cary IES biologist there, and myself will be sampling throughout the year, treated areas and untreated areas, to see if we get a significant statistical difference in the number of fish that they hold. So it isn't a proven thing yet, but we're taking the information that we've developed through the project so far, trying to apply it, come up with something creative to improve the habitat of these bulkheads.
Do we know which species of fish we're going, looking to attract?
We expect to attract the community of mostly consumers or predatory fish, which sort of equate with sport fish, so some of the basses, maybe striped bass. The holes that give access into the recesses will be relatively small, so sunfish probably. Herring's and those sort of migratory river herring usually don't go and hide in places. They like to run right up the river and find different --
Now, would fishing interfere with this? Would they -- people fish off the pier? Would that --
It is my hope this would enhance fishing off of the pier, because it would be an attractant. It would not stick out into the water, so, you know, things might grab a hold and then run for cover, and people might lose a couple of things, but at least a fish is grabbing it, you know, sort of thing.
And the state would pay for this?
We have a grant that is going to pay for the fabrication and the installation of the entire thing. So again, it's our demonstration site. We're just looking for a willing community to work with.
And are you, are you asking us? Is this being offered to us, and do you need an agreement tonight, or would this be something we'd approve at a next meeting with a resolution, or?
It's whatever you would like. If you want to have a show of support, I could certainly go back and -- because our timeline is a little tight right now. We need to get a site identified, because we want to do pre-installation sampling this fall.
Sure.
So Cary IES and we want to come out and take a look at it from a biological point of view. So we need to have a site identified. We could certainly write up, you know, what the intentions of the project are and kick that back and forth over the next month and maybe, you know, see if --
Get it approved at our September 8th meeting?
And possibly get it approved.
That is, does that timing work for you?
It works for me. I'd like to walk out of here with a sense if there's general interest or not, so.
We'll poll, which I guess -- Joe, you have --
Yeah, what, I guess I got two questions.
Sure.
Let's take them one at a time. We have applied, together with Hudsonia, for some kind of a grant to study the estuaries of the Hudson River. Do you know anything about that and how this interfaces with that application for a grant?
I am not familiar with that particular grant.
Joe, we didn't get that grant. That one, too.
Oh, that was denied?
It wasn't denied. It was awarded to Redhook.
Oh, okay. I guess the second -- then I got three questions. We also have a consultant who is studying the river. We got a grant for that of $40,000, of which we paid $10,000. Have you communicated at all with that consultant as to what they're doing and how this would fit in with their plans?
I'm not familiar with that particular work, but if there is someone working in that area, we'd be certainly interested in talking with them and finding out if there was any opportunity to collaborate on that work.
Right, there is somebody working in that area.
Okay.
And I guess the last question is, you said you would pay for the fabrication and the testing. What about the maintenance of putting it in the water, taking it out of the water? Is that something you're going to do for us?
We're current --
And what's involved?
Sure. One of the things that makes this site appealing is that we have a landward access. We can come right up to the edge of the bulkhead with a backhoe or some piece of heavy equipment that can suspend the box, which will weigh a couple hundred pounds. There'll be a boat or a barge in the water with a couple of personnel that'll set it in place and then get it in. We're anticipating that installation and removal is going to be $1,000 a pop. That is within our budget for the first year. After that, it does not belong to you. There's no obligation to you. We will see where our budget is, whether or not we can afford to put them, you know, put them in again the next year and such. So that is something that we could certainly iron out in any sort of description of the project that we pass back and forth.
So we'd only be oblig -- well, you would take care of the first year, and then we'd have no obligation?
You'd have no obligation after that, but we'd certainly try to work something out, especially if they're of benefit, sure.
I'd like to hear what Patricia thinks.
Patricia, could you come on up? Patricia Wind with the Reincliffe Waterfront Committee. The entire committee has reviewed the proposal made by Dan and the DEC, and we are all in agreement that we think that this is a great opportunity to partner with the DEC. We don't see any objections. Our biggest concern was that we didn't want the cages to interfere with any boats using the dock, but Dan has assured us that any cages that they designed would not interfere with boat usage, so we really couldn't see any downsides to this proposal. And the Waterfront Committee is excited to potentially partner with the DEC on this research project.
And you're going to get, before you go ahead, the representative of DEC together with this consulting firm that's drawing up plans? Is that related to it?
Right, I don't know, yeah, I don't know if maybe Dan didn't understand your second question. Dan has met with the committee and with Rod Morrison. Actually, Rod, the consulting committee contact, was the one that put us in contact with Dan. So we wouldn't be here with him tonight if the consulting firm didn't make that connection for us.
Okay, so you're coordinating with them.
Thank you. Does, I guess we're going to, is everybody in favor of this? Good idea?
Yeah.
Good idea. Thanks for thinking of us. I think we would like to pass something at our next meeting, so if you communicate with the clerk, and we'll circulate what we need to, and we'll be meeting again on September 8th.
Thank you.
Thank you for thinking of us, and we look forward to it. Patricia, thanks for bringing this to us. It's great. We have another presentation from Jonathan Mensch of our Open Space Affordable Housing Committee. Hi, Jonathan.
Hello, Elizabeth.
How are you?
I'm well, I'm well.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
I, as you can see from how I flubbed up the first resolution, have been on vacation. I got this. I haven't had a lot of chance to read it, but I talked to several of the board members today. We would love for you to take us through the presentation, give us the points, and I think what we'd like to do is schedule a workshop
Okay.
With you, with the Affordable Housing Committee, to really workshop this so we can get it passed at the next, you know, one of the next --
Yeah, that'd be great. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just if you could hit the salient points quickly, and we won't --
High level.
We won't torture ourselves here tonight, and we, what we will do is give several dates that you can take to your committee, and we'll formalize a workshop meeting.
Yeah, that sounds great. That sounds great. And I'll, going quickly, and just the one point I do want to make on the front end is that this entire program is based around trying to create a workforce housing program, meaning that it would promote housing that was available for people that work in the community but also live in the community, which is different than a sort of a Section 8 housing program or something along those lines.
Yes.
Which is a key differentiation. And we, you know, we've been working on this for a long time. We've been here several times in the past. The overview, the quick points here in terms of what we are proposing as the program is that, number one, there would be a mandatory construction of affordable housing units in the Village Gateway District and in the Active Senior Housing Floating District. The Village Gateway District, it's sometimes called the R6,000. That's an area by the hospital, which includes, it's about quarter acre zoning.
Is it in the village?
It's in the town, but it's --
So this is all town property?
This is all town. This is all town, yeah. And it's the only area in which higher density development is allowed.
So sort of between the hospital and the shopping plaza on the other side of the --
Yeah, sort of back behind that area. And then the other one, the Senior Housing Floating District is in a defined area. That's a district that somebody could apply for, for a senior housing development, which is also much higher density, and in that case, we would promote that 10% of those units be built as workforce housing units. In all of the other districts in town, the affordable housing obligation could be met by either a 10% construction of workforce housing units on-site or the payment of a fee of 25 cents a square foot for every house that's being built. So if you're building one house and it's 3,000 square feet, well, I'll get to the math in a second.
Which is something I think we want to workshop. That's where the concern's coming, you know, what we agree to on a per-square-foot footage, whether we set a threshold of a certain square footage that's exempt so that working-class or middle-class people aren't burdened, you know?
Yeah, and that's, and we have a rough framework that we're suggesting. I'm not saying that that's necessarily the answer, but we've been thinking about some of these same issues. And what we're doing here, just to sort of quick -- same issues. And what we're doing here, just to sort of quickly run through it, is in that case, I'll jump ahead one, which is that there's no fee in what we're proposing tonight on the construction below 1,000 square feet. So, the fee only kicks in once you get to 1,001 square feet. There's no fee on additions of 200 square feet or less, or on accessory buildings, garages, decks, porches, storage units, except if one of those structures contains more than 1,000 square feet of living space. So, that's how we've broken it down right now. As I said, that's sort of something we can certainly discuss. In terms of multifamily housing, if six units are built as part of a multifamily development, we're proposing that one must be affordable, which is actually what's set forth in the existing law. And then if there's three to five units, there's a choice of building an affordable housing unit or to pay the 25 cents a square foot. The next piece is that there's a density bonus program, which is only applicable for developments that can support more than 10 housing units, so really larger parcels of land. We're proposing that they would be eligible for up to 15%, a 15% density bonus in exchange for the payment of $3 a square foot for every one of those houses that was built, so 12 times what we're proposing for the basic housing that would be built, sort of on a one-off basis. If that were put into place, that would increase the total town potential build-out by 130 houses. That's if 100% of everything was built this way. The, and then in terms of the pricing, for a for-sale unit under the program, we're saying that the sales price needs to be affordable for somebody with an income of 100% of the area median income, which varies by housing size, paying 30% of their salary or their annual income to housing. So, if they're making $100 a year, they would be paying $30 a year towards housing. The, and then in terms of a rental, the rental program, the same idea, but it's 80% of the area median income would be paying 30% of their income towards housing costs.
So, it's, it sounds like we're getting there. I think a workshop would be helpful. We could negotiate or come to an agreement on what we'd like to charge per square foot for the building and for density bonuses. And are we talking about commercial space in this as well, or?
We haven't been, and Sue and I were just talking about that, and we've really, you know, the framework that exists is a residential program, so all of the existing regulations.
We could add commercial if we wanted to.
Yeah, if that was, if that was deemed to be appropriate. I mean, we've got some concerns about that. We have talked about that as a committee, and we're not advocating that commercial be included. We're really focusing on residential, but that's.
Why would we want the burden to be on residential builders and not commercial builders?
Well, there's a, there's a bunch of different types of commercial building, and I mean, and Sue can talk to that, too. I mean, I'm a little conflicted on that area because I've got a commercial development that I'm considering, so.
I'm Sue Hartshorn, I'm a committee member. We haven't started on commercial yet. It's only taken us six years to get the residential done, so that's one reason, just time. But the other part of it is that agricultural businesses are included. And we, as we look at commercial, we need to look both at industrial, should there ever be any in Reinbeck, and agricultural. And so, it's a big topic to take on at this time, when we can move forward with this portion that has, that has been really made to mesh well with the existing law and the existing comprehensive plan.
I think that's great. Personally, I'd just like to see, even if we get something in place, that we could, this board or a future board could fine-tune, you know. I would hate to see all the burden placed on residential and not commercial.
Well, one of the issues, too, just to quickly say, what we've been talking about, one of the issues is that when we've looked at a commercial right now, pays a lot more in taxes than they use in town services, which is a very different equation than residential. And that was one of the things that we were aware of. And we're also, you know, we're still coming out of a very slow economy.
Yep.
And we're worried about job creation. So, those are things that we've talked about as a committee.
All right, so would we like to, thank you, this is thoughtful. I know you've been working hard.
It's not a can that we're kicking down the road. It's just we want to give some thoughtful thinking to it as we go forward.
Sure.
Can we set some dates for a workshop?
That's great. Sure. How soon do you want to start this?
Well, since it's, we were assigned the task at the end of 2009, so I think the sooner the better.
Do you want to start next week?
We've been working on it for two years, so yeah, let's do it.
Next week, I'm away.
When are you back?
The 25th, 1st of September, or next week.
We have our normal meeting on the second Thursday of the month, which will probably get here more quickly than we all think if we're looking at.
Of course.
That's this Thursday.
That is this Thursday, but some of us are unable, such as myself, are unable to be here that day.
Okay.
So, I was really sort of thinking about the second Thursday in September, which gives us a, gives you.
Well, then we're going to miss the next board meeting. Why don't we do it the?
Last week?
A week of the 25th. Why can't we do it the 28th?
I'm away that week.
Oh, I thought you said you were going to be here that week.
No, I'm away that week. I can do the week of the 18th, or the week of the 1st, or the week of the 8th.
Oh, what about the 21st? Are people going to be away?
I can't do, I'm going to, I can't do the 21st. Oh, I'm sorry. The 21st is, no, I could do the 21st, but I don't know.
Sue, can you do the 21st?
The 21st is a Wednesday if I'm.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday. That's, I can do that. I can do that. We'll have to ask.
Is that fair Thursday?
Right, we'll have to ask the rest of the committee, but why don't we tentatively schedule it? And Jonathan, you can poll the rest of the committee to see.
Do we want to, do we want to do a window, like noon to 4:00, or afternoon's good for you, or?
Well, we usually have our committee meeting at 5:30.
Well, but this may take longer than just the normal committee meeting. If people could make it earlier, why don't we poll people if they could?
Any time from 4:00 to 7:00, give it a window?
Okay.
Okay. That's, Bruce pointed out, that's fair Thursday. Do we want to pick another time? How about Wednesday, the 20th, or Friday, Bruce and I are tied up, or at least I am?
I can't do it the 20th.
Okay, let's go into the first week of September, too. How about the 3rd or 4th, which is a Wednesday or a Thursday?
Why hasn't Jonathan polled the committee with those three dates and see what they want to do?
Is there a pen available?
Yes.
I can email you the dates later if you like to.
Yeah, if that's possible, that would be.
Well, why don't we, why don't you mark it down? It's the 21st, 4:00 to 7:00.
Thursday, the 21st, Wednesday and Thursday, September 3rd and 4th, and the time window is between 4:00 and 7:00.
Okay. Good enough. You don't have to email me.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this, and we'll look forward to a workshop.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
It's court night.
Sorry?
Court night.
We can meet downstairs. We don't need to be here. It's a workshop. Committee reports. I know Nancy is here for a committee report. Hi, Nancy. Come on up. Not a committee report, a discussion. Thanks, Joe.
Yeah.
This discussion is about archaeological artifacts. Nancy Kelly, I'm town historian, and it was one of my priorities for this year because the artifacts from the Thompson-Mazarella Park are currently at Bard College in their lab, and it seems advisable for them to be located in Reinbeck. So, on July 1st, Elizabeth Bruce Washburn and myself, I met with Christopher Lindner at Bard College to view the artifacts, and I sent a report around to the town board members. I hope you all got it, with pictures of the cabinets that they were located in and the type, size that the material takes up. And so, we felt that they were well cataloged and stored in metal cabinets, but that in the, in the past, artifacts have been removed to other places, not in the town of Reinbeck, and then we have no control over them. We don't have an opportunity to study them or to have them displayed, and this is a very important archaeological dig that was done in our town, and we have the potential in the future of a civic center here on that same property and the ability to be able to make displays of the inhabitants that had used the land over the centuries is a very worthwhile thing, I think. So, that I've been in contact with the Reinbeck Historical Society, and you probably are aware that the Reinbeck early town records are stored in the artifact room that the historical society has at the town library, at the Star Library. And so, the archivist for the historical society feels that it's important that we do have the artifacts there and would make room for cabinets of the same size to store the artifacts. And then I was in touch with Nancy Herter, who is the person at state level that is.
She's an archaeologist at SHPO.
Yes, uh-huh. And so, she said that she would be very much in favor of us having the artifacts here in the town, especially if we assure them that they will have, that there would be access to them in case a qualified researcher wanted to study them, and also if we will see that they would be cataloged and the information about them would be available to researchers.
I'm just going to interrupt. I spoke to Nancy Herter, too, and she told me that she was not in favor of us moving them, so I'm confused. Nancy said the best place for them is at an accredited college or university or in Albany.
I talked with her today, and she said if we send her a proposal.
Okay.
She would be very much in favor of it.
We, you know, agreed to this Standards for Cultural Resource Investigations and Curation of Archaeological Collections in the State of New York. Nancy sent this to me, so I mean, I guess we just need her to sign off on anything that we want to do.
I think so. She's, you know, concerned that it be secure storage. You don't want people being able to wander in and wander off with your artifacts. And in this case, the artifact and the archive room is locked, except when the archivist is on duty. And the cases would be locked with a special key.
I agree. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Do we know how much the cases are going to cost?
Well, I have looked into it, and the case wasn't too exorbitant. I think I could cover it with my budget, but the freight was kind of close to the cost of the case. So, I have not looked into used things that in the past we've dealt with, places like Mike's Office Furniture in Kingston. I haven't had time to look at that. And so, the individual cases, I would think, would be around $500 apiece. And that would be new ones, the ones that they have at Bard, they told me they had gotten from Albany as a hand-me-down, and so they were used ones.
I thought there's thousands of these relics. How many are we talking about?
They're listed in the report that the town received. I didn't take note of that, but I did send you the pictures of the cabinets, and there are numerous artifacts on each shelf, but it doesn't look overwhelming.
Have we seen where Bard is keeping them and how many cabinets they have? Is it a lot?
Yeah.
They have four.
Four, and then they have soil bags. I'm most concerned that we have a proposal that SHPO and the Office for Historic Preservation of the State signs off on before we do anything. So, that's personally what I would like the board to see before we move ahead with this.
Well, if you're willing, I would write up a draft for the proposal, and then Elizabeth can look it over.
Well, it's a board decision, so.
Do we think they're safe at Bard? Is there any risk?
No.
Of it?
There's very strong feelings in the community by certain people that the relics should be here. And so, that's part of what's going on. The safety thing is, I agree with Elizabeth, we need to have a safe place, but there are very strong feelings about that. So, over time, it flares up and depending on what else goes on. It's like the maps and the other relics. I think it probably belongs, they probably belong in Reinbeck once we can move them, but I don't think there's, you know, we have to throw them in boxes like we were talking at one time, you know. I think we need to do the right thing, but I think a lot of people would prefer them to be here rather than someplace else. And you've heard from some of them.
Other questions?
You know.
Thank you, Nancy. Thanks for coming tonight.
So, do you want me to write something up, or are you going to make a motion about it, or?
No, I think this is just a presentation, so thank you.
But shouldn't we ask Nancy to write a proposal?
I think she's going to, yeah.
And work with the SHPO lady, or?
SHPO and, you know, the other thing we can do in the interim is, I talked to the professor there. We have a signed contract, you know, that these are stored at Bard, and Warren's looked at it, seems to be fine. You know, they're fine for now. If we want to move them, we do have to go through this procedure and get the state to sign off on it. So, it's not as simple as just throwing them into boxes. It has to be done through channels, so.
And I'm in touch with the professor about a display that he has available for us.
Yeah, we saw that.
And we did look at it. He's been refurbishing it, and we're making arrangements to have it installed at the library.
Yeah, just for the public, the artifacts are very well taken care of. Bard is very generous, and people would like to see them returned to Reinbeck. If we bring them back to Reinbeck, we'll follow the appropriate protocol and procedures set out by the state and the guidelines that we agreed to follow. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
Any, there's a cemetery committee couldn't be here.
Do you want to take the fire?
No. Cemetery couldn't be here tonight, and there was an issue that I'll just bring to your attention. It's not, I don't liaise with this committee, so I'm a little rusty. The, there are a couple of deeds that I have not been able to sign. There were two plots that were sold in several years ago for $1,700. These people would like to turn in these plots now and buy natural, natural burial ground plots. They bought them for a lower price. Are we in favor of refunding them the purchase price or the current price?
Why don't we just do an even-steven trade for the plot for plot?
Well, it's a higher price for the natural burial. I think that's the, one of the issues.
They paid $1,700, and they need to be credited $2,000 now. The town would lose $300.
But you, it's a bigger question than just these two people. You have people who bought plots 20, 30 years ago, and fortunately, they're not using them, but they may want to turn those in, too, and I guess it's really a question, how do we want to handle trades into the natural cemetery? And I think it's a complex issue. I'm not sure how we should handle it.
I said I'd bring them up because people are waiting to get them done. I don't know either. I agree. I think. I agree, I think it is complex. Should we table this and wait for the...
And think about it for our next meeting.
I thought Warren had given us some guidance on selling them, selling the plots.
It's at current market rate, I believe.
Yeah, if they could sell it, they would have to sell it at the current market rate.
Yeah, and they would, they either sell it to us or they sell it to somebody else.
If they sell it to us, it seems like our rules require us to pay market price.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we want to be in a position to start buying people's cemetery plots.
But at the same time, we don't want to be losing $300 on a trade-in.
I understand. I don't remember any advice from Warren on this.
Yeah, I think he gave it to us.
In writing?
I don't remember. So they paid 17. What do the natural burial plots go for?
26.
26.
For two. These are a pair. 13 each.
So they paid, they paid 17 each. Okay, so they're going to get a refund no matter what.
No, maybe a total of 17.
No, they're going to pay a difference. They're going to pay more.
I think it's a total of 17. But you have people who probably pay $300 for a plot.
They paid 850 per plot. Plots are currently going for 1,000. Do we credit them 850 that they paid or do we credit them 1,000?
I think they're going more than 1,000.
This is just what Shelley gave me.
And the new plots are how much?
No, the conventional plots are 1,000. The green burial plots are 1,300 each.
So the question is whether they pay 300 apiece or 450.
Well, to upgrade, the natural plots are 1,300 each.
Right. So they paid 850, they're worth 1,000 today. Question is, do we get 450 from them or 300 for them?
Right, right.
Okay, that's clear.
We have people waiting. They've been waiting for a couple of months. Do we want to...
I'd table it so we can think about it. Because I think you're deciding also if people pay $300, you know, why, you know, pick just these two people. It's really across the board.
It's a policy issue.
Yeah, what policy do we want where we have a new burial ground and can people just trade in their existing plot? Pay the difference between buying a new plot now and a new plot in the green cemetery. That's one approach. Another approach is people should try to sell their existing plots and see what they can get for them. I'm sure there's other approaches, so I think we really got to think about it and...
So Elaine is the liaison to this department. Let's have her take it up.
We have Elaine make a recommendation.
Let's have Elaine work on it. She's on vacation. Usually do that. Okay. Any other committee reports, Alan? You do have a committee report. Tech.
Well, we're moving along.
Yeah, I got a computer in my office.
Yeah. All the servers are installed behind the curtain. There's a cooling issue. We need some kind of portable cooler because the temperature back there gets to be about 90 degrees.
I think we have to do that and...
I mean, the equipment will work fine in 90-degree temperature, but it's going to affect the life and reliability, so we ought to spring for some kind of portable cooler. And in the next week, we should start installing workstations.
Anybody else? It's August.
August?
It's August, it's quiet.
Were you talking, at one point, there were multiple tablets?
Two.
And there was something we didn't need two or something?
That was municity.
We have them for municity.
Okay.
They wanted, the original proposal was for us to have four and the four tablets were covered by the grant from the county. However, we'd have to pay an ongoing monthly fee for connectivity to the cellular network, which was not cheap, and we decided we only needed two.
I mean, the reason I was asking is we figured out that we dealt with Frontier down at the pool and they were hitting us with the municipal thing and we had to do three years and we could cancel it, but we still have to pay. And it was 150 bucks rather than 50 bucks and all this other stuff. And so what we decided was if we could get a tablet with a data plan that was being used someplace, then for the summer, that would solve all of our problems.
Just do it.
Yeah, the truth is, we got two. I don't know that we need two full-time.
Yeah, but, well, if you could look at one and see if the possibility of us using one next summer, that'd be great.
Or do you want to get another tablet?
I don't think we ought to get another one. I think two is plenty.
Okay.
I don't, the times we're going to need two at once are few and far between. It seems like over the summer, you know, why pay, it's a fair, I don't remember the numbers, but they were in the better part of 100 bucks a month for a data plan for those things.
Any other committee reports or liaison?
Let me say this, that reminds me of the discussion. Alan has done us a big favor in figuring out how we can get a reading of our solar power at the transfer station without getting internet service. And if he will periodically go up there to make sure the machine is working and can report to it, I think we've saved 49 times 12 dollars. So I do thank Alan for looking at this and having the knowledge.
Nice to get the information. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what it involves is just hooking a computer up to that line.
Downloading it.
And it takes five minutes and you get the report. The report, the gadget that's there basically accumulates data forever. So every time you look at it, you see from the time it was installed, which was four years ago or so, to the present moment, how many watt-hours it's generating, how many watt-hours were used by that building, and also the current readings.
And we know it's currently working.
And, yeah, you know it's still working.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? One more week of camp left?
I don't know if I'll make it.
You will. You can smell the barn. Let's go on to our other resolutions then. Resolution, we're on tab number one, 2014-275, approving the preliminary count abstract cables, vouchers 874 through 981. There are, 82 checks. The amount has been amended to 144, 250, 66.
141.
141.
Motion.
Do I have a second? Any discussion?
The only thing I wanted to raise, really, two things. One, sometimes some of our people go to retail stores to buy things and they pay sales tax on it. If we could tell these people to bring a tax-exempt certificate, we will save on sales tax. And if the retailer won't honor that, maybe we can get it through our regular supplier.
Okay.
So if we could avoid that. The other thing is on our credit card, apparently we only have a, I think it's a limit of $100, and we've gotten hit with an over-the-limit fee. And if we could raise the authorized line, I think we got them to waive it, but there was a $39 over-the-limit fee. And if we raise the amount to something, because apparently we're putting postage on the credit card, so that brings us over the $100 limit. I don't know if we need a formal resolution or we can just...
Probably I'll talk to Shelley and we'll get it on.
Okay, yeah, maybe the next meeting we can...
Good.
Thanks, Joe.
And Bruce, if you could ask people to get the sales tax exemption slip before they go buy stuff.
Okay.
That's the right answer, okay.
Right answers.
You know, you've got to realize, Joe, that there's things like, sometimes we can't do that.
Yes, I understand.
Like we need toilet paper.
I understand, and if the toilet paper vendor won't take our exemption, we have a sheet, we'll just have to buy it.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 214-276, approving the preliminary capital abstracts, five checks totaling $97,286.14. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution number three, 2014-277, approving budget transfers and amendments. May I have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 214-279, a new telephone system for Town Hall. May I have a motion?
Are we skipping over 278?
Okay, I've got this on the table, I'll go back. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Which one are we voting on, telephone or solar?
Resolution 214-279, tab number five, new telephone system for Town Hall. Discussion?
And what's the cost of this?
It is $7,950 plus, I'd like to amend this, add $1,200 to move the computer box from downstairs underneath the plumbing to upstairs here on the cage and rewire. We've had two failures from plumbing accidents and I think since we're putting a new system in, if we could relocate the box here, it would be the time to do it. So it's...
Seems reasonable.
Do we have money in the budget for that?
We have, let's call it 36,600 in our capital projects 39, which is our Town Hall equipment budget.
36,000.
36,000. So this will probably, this will be under $10,000. I'd like to take it from there and...
Do it.
I think we, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Let's go back now to item number four, Resolution 214-278, adopting the unified solar permit and authorizing consolidated funding application. This is tab number four. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Any discussion?
Well, I just wanted to know on this, have we run this by whoever issues solar permits? Does this give them enough information that we have on our current applications? I think we ought to run it by...
I believe it does and I'll talk to the zoning administrator.
Okay. I have no problem with it if he has no problem with it, but I think we got to ask.
I was at Nanotech University a couple of years ago up in Albany and this, the National Tsar was there and everybody, this was a huge issue in New York State and it's something that deters people from going to solar and consumes an enormous amount of money.
Complexity of the application, you mean?
And the time, and it's a very simple thing. And so I'm all for this.
I am too.
And I would say we approve it and amend anything we need to based on whatever the CEO says.
I think everybody's fine with it. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Also, there might be, although I think the money has run out, a $2,500 stipend for us passing this. So thank you all, we'll see if we can get that money. If not, we've got a simplified permitting method to, for people to install solar panels on the roof only. These aren't for standing arrays. Resolution, this is number six, Resolution 214-280, contracting for professional engineering services in connection with replacement of the Town Hall steam boiler. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
I guess I raised with Bruce whether we ought to get some other bids. This is $23,900. Doesn't have anything to do, I believe, with asbestos and removal. It's just what boiler do we get and what kind of contraptions we hook up with. And $23,009, to me, seems like a money. It may be a fair price, but it is significant. And I think when we've discussed engineering projects, we decided that if it's a significant amount of money, we will ask a number of people for price. So, and I don't know if this will interfere with the time limit. It seems that we know what we have to do, which is remove the asbestos from the furnace room. That can proceed. I don't think we have any contracts for that. I don't even know if you can get a estimate, but that's the first step. So I think we have some time to go out and let some other engineering companies we use see what price they would give us. We know we want a steam unit, so.
Well, okay, I'll give you my comments. We used Weston and Sampson to figure out that we wanted a steam unit. We used Weston and Sampson to crawl through the system. We used Weston and Sampson to tuck in Nisarta because Elaine wanted us to. The, according to the budget, 15,000 is the engineering and consulting, the actual professional design work.
You say the budget, which budget is this? What we gave to the county?
Yeah, which we got from Weston and Sampson. So we've used them for grant input. So their management of preparing the bid, taking us through the bid and everything is $8,900, which comes out to 7.12% of what we think the budget is now. Engineering typically for this kind of stuff is 10%. That, you know, that's ballpark. If we want to get somebody else, I'm fine with that. If you want to get other quotes, I think what we've done though is by not putting it out to bid originally, we've now biased whatever the bidding is because anybody knows public records, what's been said, and they're always going to come in less. So, you know...
Like a dollar less.
Pardon me?
Like a dollar less.
Yeah, yeah, but we're at that point. And the other thing I think we really need to remember, I don't care whether we use Weston Sampson or Erwin Anthony or Crawford or anybody completely different, I don't care. We have 45-day bid process probably, once we get started with this. And then there's going to be the coordination of the asbestos and everything else. You take the 45 days, you take, whenever we go through all of this, we're into the cold weather.
Yeah, we're not getting this done. We'll be lucky, yeah.
Right. So we either wait till next year and pray that we make it another year. All I'm telling you is we've run out of room. We should have acted on this in June. I don't care what you do, but...
Alan?
I'd say go ahead.
I think it's trigger pulling, Tom.
Yeah, because we're, I mean, I agree with Bruce, we're headed for a disaster.
Yes.
That boiler is on its last, if a boiler had legs, it would be on its last one.
I don't see why we couldn't call a couple of other engineers that we use in this week and see how fast they can give us a bid. If it's in the same ballpark, I'd use Weston and Sampson. But if it's significantly lower, then I think we should consider it. Talking about a lot of money here.
Any further discussion?
How much of the engineering costs covered by the grant from the county?
Well, we don't know if we're going to get it. The update on the grant from the county is they've come back to me and I asked for $50,000 for the total grant, okay, or we asked for. They've come back and they've asked for what would be the, our drop-dead minimum amount that we would take. So I gave them some magic numbers and went back with 38.5. And seriously, because that, based on the numbers that we have available...
Sure.
That looks like what we would need to get. So that's there. I think the only encouraging thing is they're still talking to us. They haven't thrown us out yet.
Right, but I think it's a real long shot to get a grant.
Well, you said that from the beginning, that's why you had me fill it out.
Right, although I did fill out the first couple of pages. Right, although I did fill out the first couple of pages, but then the technical part got over my head. Yeah, we should try for it, but it's a long shot.
Well, we, well, Bruce, would we take this money out of the capital projects for Town Hall equipment, or would we take it out of contingency, or...
We're, we're, we're going to have to reshuffle the capital projects anyway. We have stuff that's sitting there that's inactive for years.
Well, we could cover it in Town Hall equipment, even after the phone system.
Well, this part of it, yeah, yeah, we could do that, but we also have money that we've been putting in the budget. We have big capital, transfer to capital lines, so we haven't done anything with yet. So we, we have that money there too.
Is there any further discussion? I know Joe would like to bid it out.
Yeah, I think we should talk. To me, it's a lot of money, and I don't think a furnace is that expensive.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
When the, when they were here, they gave us a, off the top of their head, cost estimate for the whole thing. And I, do you remember the number?
In the twos, wasn't it?
Around 200 and...
Two thirty?
Two thirty.
Now, that included the asbestos removal?
No.
No, it didn't.
No, it didn't. That was the system.
And I think what Bruce says is accurate, that, you know, having 10 percent or less of the cost be the engineering cost is reasonable.
Two sixty, was it? I don't know. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
So moved. I think we're on...
Sit here and wait for my partner on.
Thank you. Thank you, Bruce. Number seven, resolution 214-281, acceptance of the 215 highway material bids. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
This is our boiler plate, Kathy Kinsella went out to bid for the materials, and she's asking us to, to approve it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 214-282, it's approving our fire contract with the village of Reinbeck for 2014, and I unfortunately have to ask that we hold this over. We need to set a public hearing, we had a procedural SNAFo. I think this, with limitations to noticing, the earliest that John could get this clearly noticed would be the 25th, so the first week in September, or at our town board meeting on the 8th.
John, is that right, that that's the first time we could have the public meeting?
Well, that's not the first time, but I, I think that...
With breathing room and giving ourselves, you know, in case it doesn't get noticed or in the paper, with safety.
My own view is we ought to move this, we've already lost the mayor, we lost the member of it. The longer you hold this thing out, the more chances...
I spoke to the mayor today and let him know about our procedural SNAFo. If you want to do it the week of the 25th while I'm away, go ahead, I'd love to be here, but that's for the board to decide.
Well, they're, they're going to approve it tomorrow night.
They've already approved it, and they're, they are going to wait for us to have our public hearing and approve it with the amendments that Joe did, and give a final approval after that.
So they've approved it the way Joe's amended?
Yes, there's, we're all in agreement, we have a...
So it's, it's a slam dunk once we have the public hearing?
We have a handshake, yes.
Well, but Bruce, legally, till both parties sign, you can change your mind.
Would you guys like to do this while I'm away, or would you like to wait till all our town board meeting? I, I need to set a date for the public hearing.
I would move it along, you never know what can happen.
Alan? We could do it sooner, why, I mean, you're, there's nothing, you have no objections to this.
Nope.
Yeah, so, we'll be there in spirit.
Bruce, what do you...
I don't care.
Okay, so how about, you guys choose a date, the week of the 25th, when you'd like to do it?
That's the 25th.
Does that work? Is that it early?
We're just looking.
Fine.
We're going to do like seven?
Yeah, why don't we do it regular time, 6:45?
6:45, special town board meeting. That'll be, hopefully, that'll be the only thing on...
It's not a special town board meeting, it's a public hearing.
Public hearing.
For our fire contract.
And we can vote right after the hearing?
We'll be both.
And, you're right.
Because we want to vote on it.
We want to vote on it.
So it's a special board meeting?
They're talking about the 25th?
Yeah.
Monday, August 25th, at 6:45, for a public hearing and a special town board meeting to approve our contract.
That should be the only thing on the agenda, please.
Yes.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You okay with that?
Yeah, unless there's something else pressing that has to be done, like...
Urgencies always take precedence.
I, I didn't understand that. It was...
No, he's, I said that that should be the only thing on the agenda, and Joe said if something pressing comes up, we should be able to have...
We need a, a motion for the date, for the 25th.
I move that we set the hearing and vote on the fire contract...
The second?
For the 25th of August at 6:45.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All abstained since I'm away, so moved.
And then, maybe we could make sure that the village has the contract, so they can sign it tomorrow night.
I talked to the mayor, they're not signing it tomorrow night, they're going to wait until after our public hearing, and then sign what we've signed.
Oh, okay, so they don't want to sign first.
I wouldn't put it like that, it seemed very, I think we're all in agreement, let's not...
I certainly think we are.
Let's not pollute the waters here.
I think we certainly are.
I think this is a good thing, and let's proceed on, with good faith.
With all due deliberate speed.
Resolution 2014-283, I'm sorry, let me back up here, no, that's correct, authorizing certain general entries, budget amendments, and fund transfers in connection with the Vandenberg Cove sewer district. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? For the public, Bruce, you want to take us through this, you want me to?
Well, basically, what happened years ago is the town loaned the sewer district $267,000. It was before I was on the board, it was for soft costs and repairs for the, the system, and then we've gotten refunded from the EFC grant or DC grant, and that money is there, so we're, the first thing is we're taking it back, we're paying off the loan. As far as the other ones go, we have some issues that we have to deal with down there, some I and I issues, and we're moving money around to take care of those too. Done.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, we've done 10. Number 11, resolution 2014-285, we're authorizing bid for repair and resurfacing of the rec park tennis and basketball courts. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Motion.
Number is this?
Second.
Whatever.
Any discussion? We're going to go out to bid and try and get these done before the cold weather, so that we don't have infrastructure problems. Yes?
11 is fine, we're going to do 10?
We're on 11.
Right, but did we do 10?
Yes.
10 was the mining overlay.
It was the first one of the night.
Okay, so the 11 is the mining overlay district?
That's 12.
That's 12.
We're authorizing a bid, we have a motion on the floor for, for, for resurfacing our tennis courts and basketball courts.
Did we do that one?
Yeah.
Were you voting on that?
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay, we didn't vote on 10?
Oh, no, no, we did, we...
We voted on 10?
Yes, John Lyons presented it, it's voted on, we passed it.
No, this is different, this is, I thought, okay, yes, okay.
And then 12 is the map.
I understand, 12 is the map, that was confusing me.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
You're getting the documents checked by Warren, right?
We just voted on 10.
Otherwise, we get...
By the way.
Tab number 12, we have a resolution 2014-286, approving preparation of mining overlay district map. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
For the public, this is to retain a surveyor to give us a meets and bounds description of the proposed mining overlay district for our new local law. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-287, tab 13, approving contract with Weston and Sampson to conduct smoke testing for the Vandenberg Cove sewer system. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I can explain it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Please explain.
Okay. The collection systems in the sewer district, there's pipes that run from different houses down to mains, that run into the processing plants. They walked the system last week, and they found a few caps that were off, inspection caps, which are easy to fix, but because of the DC interest in this, we're also interested in finding any other issues, and the way you do that is you open up a manhole cover, you throw a smoke bomb in, and you watch, put, and put a fan in it, and see where it blows out, because it'll, it's going to blow out the next opening. And so, what we also have to do with that is we have to inform the homeowners, because it's going to go up the laterals, and if they haven't flushed their toilet in a while, and they have a spare room or something like that, it's going to go through the trap. So we have to put a letter out, and John's been working with them on that.
And we have to inform emergency services too?
Yeah, yeah.
Fire departments.
We gotta let them know, because they're going to see some, this is, this is...
Standard?
Standard kind of stuff, and it's a jungle down there, by the way.
Bruce, what confuses me though, is they say that we paved over certain of the manhole covers, which I find very strange, you know, whether they're really right, that we paved it over?
Yeah, some of the, some of the manhole covers in the roads have been paved over.
I thought, usually, don't they pave around them? I think maybe we ought to talk to Kathy, it seems very strange that we would pave over manhole covers.
Um, let's...
Maybe we can ask Kathy, I'll vote for it, but I really do think we got to talk to the highway department.
Okay, but you, remember, there's two highway departments down there.
Hyde Park as well.
Oh, you think that maybe they paved over it?
Well...
Well, we don't know.
Don't know.
Whatever.
Did they pave down there too?
The, it's a strange street. Reinbeck goes in and plows, lifts their plow, and then Hyde Park comes in and plows and lifts their plow. They don't, they don't work together, so...
Well, that's not true, I think they do have a plowing agreement down there.
Last winter, when I was down there, they didn't do that, they lifted it.
Well, I think we have a map as to where...
We have a, uh...
They claim that it was paved over.
Yeah, there's three of them.
Right, maybe we can ask Kathy, and I can talk to Kathy tomorrow as to whether that would be us or Hyde Park.
Yeah, but what, what difference does that make?
Doesn't make any difference, but maybe they're, maybe they're incorrect that there's manholes.
They're actually all, they're all in town of Reinbeck, there's a town line right there.
Oh, okay, so you think they're all in Reinbeck?
Yeah.
No, it just may be a mistake, maybe they're not paved over, maybe they're, either the map is wrong...
Could, could be.
Or something, but I think we ought to at least ask.
We have a resolution on the floor to approve $3,900 for smoke testing in the Vandenberg Cove sewer district. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
And I'll speak to Kathy about whether we really paved over.
I think our last resolution of the night is 2014-288. It's a consideration of a rec camp refund request, may I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
For discussion, someone whose child was unable to attend nine out of 10 days of camp for medical reasons is requesting a refund, which would be $297 minus the processing fee. Our refund policy states that in rare cases, a participant may encounter an unforeseeable and unavoidable situation that they feel may warrant a refund of feels, fees. These situations will be reviewed on an individual basis by the town board, so I think this is one of these situations. We're asking to refund $297 minus a $25 processing fee. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Bruce, let me ask Bruce, what do you recommend here, running rec?
Over the years, it was six and one and half a dozen of the other, so this sounds like there's a medical reason, yeah.
So, all, we are voting to refund the money, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. We have a couple of discussion items, Town Hall Security Safeco, a while ago, we got a bid from Safeco, which was all at prevailing wage, to install security cameras and buzzers at the handicapped accessible door in the back. This is something that our insurance company, it's pretty much mandated that we do for safety, violence in the workplace. Are we going to proceed with this? Are we going to try and do it ourselves? We need to, there are four recommendations for violence in the workplace. One is safety when installing the docks at the waterfront, two is ventilation in the, in the pool area, you know...
Fan's in.
Fan is in?
Yeah, we installed it.
Check, that's off the list, the dock is good with the Bobby's equipment, this is another one, and the other one is Kathy hiring part-time workers as flaggers. So this is on our plate. I think we either have to hire, we don't have to decide this tonight, it's something we'd have to push along, I'd like it if someone could take it up as a project, you know, if we don't want to do prevailing wage, we have to have our maintenance department install it.
My concern is this back door is often open, we have smokers who go out, it's not shut, so are we going to be installing a buzzer, but they're going to leave the door open, and...
I think we have to make sure that everybody knows that we're, we're locking that door, we're locking the side door, this is going to, a policy change, we're going to have to inform the public, inform the employees that it's mandatory to keep them locked, only the front door is the entrance, it's a big cultural change, but it is, it's been recommended for safety for everybody in Town Hall, and then we install a buzzer and a camera in the back. So I'll take the initiative of writing the letter and circulating it.
So we have to lock the side door also?
Yep.
Are we going to have a camera on the side doors?
Well, we haven't decided, that, they really want a ca, they want a ca, they asked for a camera on all doors, but especially on that for buzzing people in.
Nice also to have a sign, if they're all going to go in and out the front, that says no smoking within so many feet of the building.
So we got one, two, three, and four, okay. Four cameras. I, I, I think we should bid this, I think it should be prevailing wage, I don't think Bobby's going to do, he's going to get Hanson or somebody else to do it. I, I think we need to bid this out and get it installed properly. And, and we're going to get a DVR with it, right?
No, I think it's all on a computer, cloud-based.
But, but it'll have DVR capability, so we can go back and see...
Well, we would look at it on our computers.
Yeah, but you need to record it somewhere.
Right.
Before you...
I, Safeco had a proposal of where they were recording it to, and I don't remember.
Okay.
So...
It, it doesn't work, it's not enforceable if you don't have the DVR capability to go back, so we need, we need to do that. I'm, I'm for putting it out to bid, myself.
Okay. Okay. I will write the letter about locking, keeping that door, the downstairs door and the side door locked at all times. Only the front entrance will be used, and we'll proceed with bidding out what the insurance company has recommended in terms of cameras and buzzers.
I guess I don't have a problem with the back door, if it'll be in the fourth. I just hate to see this place become a fortress, and we just have one entrance.
Back door doesn't get used by the public.
No, it does. You do get some people coming in, you get handicap people, and you got people parking in the parking lot, but.
We're putting a buzzer there, right?
Right, but that's away from everything.
Did you go to the class?
Violence in the workplace.
What? No, I have not. It's supposed to be rescheduled.
It's, it's for the safety of our people. It's not a fortress. People get used to it. Most municipal buildings have cameras and buzzers now, so.
I don't mind the camera, it means just locking the side door.
It's a recommendation that we have to comply with for our, for our general liability and our workman's compensation to keep everybody here safe. And I don't think we have, I don't think we have the.
Luxury.
Of not complying.
I agree.
So, we're talking about cameras for?
I've sent out the recommendations. I'll send it out again. I don't remember if it's just here or all over.
Should be on the fourth.
And I'll, I'll send you the email.
It's not much more. John would buzz people in.
Okay, one other.
Yeah, but you can keep people out, too.
One, one other, tab 17, we are potentially, well, we have put in an application with three other municipalities to share a paver, and we've added a roller to it. Mylan and superintendent Bill Gallagher is the lead on this, and the county has asked them to come up with an amount that the municipalities would contribute. They're asking for $15,000 per municipality to buy the $200,000 paving machine with a roller, and are we inclined to contribute $15,000?
I had sent to, I spoke to Kathy this morning, and I think you spoke to Kathy this morning. I think we got kind of different answers. I asked Kathy who had a trailer to move this equipment from town to town. She didn't know. She thought maybe our trailer might be able to do it, but it hasn't been measured. I asked about storage, and she wasn't sure who would store it. I asked about the $15,000, whether that was the county's suggestion, or that's what Bill Gallagher thought. She didn't know. And she suggested I send an email to Gallagher and ask him those questions, which I did, and the response was, we're having a meeting Wednesday night. Would you like to attend? So, I think either Kathy, or I'll go, or anybody else who wants to go, so we can find out more. It may be that the $15,000 each town bill suggested really is his, and maybe it can be less. It sounds like we'll have to put something in if we want to do it, but I do want to make sure that we can, we're able to transport this.
Well, it has to be transported to the job anyway. I mean, you can't, even if it was just one town, you can't use it. You're not going to roll a roller through the town streets to get to a highway.
Right, we're more worried about the paver, and you're right, probably each town would have to move it unless it's going to one job site in a town, and Safe, Pine Plains had the.
Why don't we, why don't we ask Kathy to go to the meeting and let us know?
Okay, and report, and presumably, we can act on this.
Your special meeting.
On Monday, right, we have the meeting that Alan doesn't want to add anything to.
Oh, we could add, Kathy just.
Okay. I think it makes sense to do it, but I think we need these questions answered.
Maybe we can do less. I'd like to go.
Trailer would be part of the deal, because.
No, there is a trailer. I believe one of, Mylan and maybe Pine Plains has one, and Mylan has said that they could.
Right, but it's not part of the deal. It's not part of the deal.
But if they transport the paver here with the trailer, how are we going to transport it to a job site?
All of this has to be worked out in an intermunicipal agreement.
Yes, there you go.
So, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue relating to a specific person, and we will be coming out to take an action. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. We'll be back. It's a wage issue. Thanks. Do I need a motion to come back in, or?
Motion to come back in, please.
I'd like to propose a stipend for an employee at our pool cashier equaling.
$1.96 an hour for hours worked.
$1.65 an hour for hours worked. May I have a second?
Second.
Or, I guess we was all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. So, I will direct Shelley to do that. Thank you. I think there's, Mrs. Butler, you waited so patiently. I didn't know you wanted to speak. Any comment from, from the public? Would you come on up?
I know I haven't been to many meetings, but.
We're grateful, we're grateful to see you. How are you?
I feel this is very important. I'm in support of an older person accepting tickets for the pool or money for the pool[1733.73]